Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the one nation, indivisible, and every and every one and every person, one nation, indivisible.
Please join me as I pray. Father, again, we're thankful for the blessing for this day. Sometimes when we look at the situation in the world and our country and state, local community, we're thinking back to how King David was rounded by enemies. He wrote in Psalm 127, "Unless the Lord builds a house, when labor in vain be built." "Unless the Lord lurks at the gate watching the wait, but in vain." Father, if you could build this country, it'd be a great country. It would be built to serve you, Lord. So we just pray that if we move forward through this pandemic, you keep your hand on the center. You give our leaders the wisdom and knowledge to make good decisions that bring us back to where we're before. Father, teach local judges, local prosecutors, all of our elected officials. They've got a tough line of decisions ahead of them to make. We just pray that you give them the wisdom and the strength and the knowledge to make the decisions that have been all of this material. We just have a hard chair of you for what's been unfolding for us. We pray that you're in your soul and we give you glory. We pray that you write about it.
Morning, everyone. We do have a quorum. Do we have anybody signed in? There's no one that wants to make a presentation. We'll move on to the consent items. What? One person is not identified. Are you the one that wanted to make a presentation?
I'm not sure if I'm on. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurrell, are you on? Okay, consent items. We have one, two, three, four, five consent items. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, disapprove. First quarter Maritime Museum, Kathy Roberts. I believe she's not here, but she sent her report in, and I've looked at it. I don't see any problems with it.
Make a move. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. This process is up to you on the Chamber of Commerce. Come on up. Get the mic over here.
Good morning. So first of the year started off with our strategy to really ramp up, get behind the different festivals, get their press releases out early, get their social media going. We were going strong with the Gospel Festival, the Hoop and Crane via land and boat tours, the burning, the bald eagle's nest down at the refuge, and on and on and on. And then about mid-March, we got this thing called COVID and had to, of course, shut down all of the advertising and go through the list and see what we could get out of contracts and all of that. And we're still working through all of that, and we were meeting with our media buyers weekly to make the right decisions there. But all of it has been pulled at this time. We, at the, let's see, a couple of weeks ago, our chairman of the board, Blake McDavid, wished to form an Economic Recovery Task Force of 10 sectors of the community and started meeting with the leaders that he had chosen to head up each of those sections. And those groups are meeting this week via Zoom. They've all received their links via an email. And let's say, for example, if it's the retail selector, there's about 100 emails in that particular link. So we don't anticipate 100 retail establishments to chime in on the Zoom, but we expect, oh, 20, 25 or so, to kind of get everybody on the, kind of the same page in terms of what the elected officials determine in the next order as far as our reopening process. Lot of question, lot of confusion out there. So we've really tried to help guide those answers and get everybody on the same page. And then on Friday at 1:00, there will be one overall Zoom meeting of each of those 10 sector leads along with our elected officials to hear the next steps and the recovery process and what we'll be doing. So I just wanted to include you guys. If any of you want a Zoom link for that, please call me or email me, and we'll get you those links. Many of you already have them. We're trying to keep it very productive and streamline the process.
Thank you.
You know, I'd have to agree. I looked at the hot funds and the venue tax funds for the first three months. Of course, they're reported on a month lag basis, and they were running considerably ahead of last year.
Yep.
Just from beginning to really recover from Harvey, and then all of a sudden, now we're shut down. So I commiserate with you.
I think 2020 would have been our year. It would have been just a bang-up year in terms of bringing back tourism. I think we would have been looked at in terms of recovery and in the third year, so to speak. And then this came along. So it's really unfortunate. It's unfortunate for the local economy, the businesses, and everyone. But we'll get through this. Sandy posted a picture on Facebook as we're trying to monitor everything, and she posted a picture of the big tree. And her words were, "Stand strong." The big tree did. The big tree has been there through all this stuff, even the pandemic in the 1900s. And it's still there. So that's a great.
I know it's a lot of consolation to you, but in this month's edition of county news, National County, all the counties that rely on tourism are all experiencing the same problems that we're experiencing.
Yes.
You got it? Okay, we're gonna go back to item number two and read that proclamation. You want to? Thank you. Let's have a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded by Commissioner Cheney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Will you read item, the proclamation?
I will. This is proclamation P-03-2020, whereas 25% of Texas youth experience mental disorders severe enough to significantly impair their ability to function. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Texas. And whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death among adolescents ages 12 through 17 in Texas. And whereas the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health issues, or services, excuse me, for children, youth, young adults, and families place upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. And whereas Coastal Plains Community Center, through its unique approach to serving children, youth, and young adults with mental health and substance abuse disorders, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and their families in our community. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health issues and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas Coastal Plains Community Center is committed to improving the system for our children with mental health needs, now therefore, we, the Aransas County Commissioners' Court, hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 to be Children's Mental Health Awareness Month in Aransas County, and also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Aransas County to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health needs.
Thank you. And I'd like to take this time to apologize for overlooking that very important resolution proclamation. Okay, item number eight. This is a yearly thing, I believe. Approve, disapprove, authorize county judge to sign it, 2019 annual library report to the state.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, disapprove. Resolution R-072020 to designate authorized signatories for contractual agreement and documents requesting funds pertaining to the Texas Community Block Grant Contract Number 7219005, planning study for possible future sewer expansion.
This and the next two agenda items, I believe, are all on. It's a grant to do a survey as far as income level and things required to get a block grant for first-time sewer hookup in those areas. This is in the Libo Pelomentry Peninsula, Donny Drive area. And, you know, what they, the information they find in the survey will be used to apply for grants if the area qualifies once they do the survey.
Commissioner, these fees that come from Grant Works, they'd be covered by the grant?
Right. This is a, it is a grant to pay them to do the survey.
To do the survey?
Yeah.
Take a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that for all three of them?
No, there's a little difference in each one of them. Approve, disapprove. Resolution R-082020, adopting required Texas Community Block Grant number for a possible future sewer expansion, limited English proficiency standards and so forth.
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, disapprove. Grant Planning Services Agreement between Aransas County and Grant Works for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Contract 7219005 Colonial Funds Planning Grant. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, disapprove. Request for creation of additional full-time position customer service specialist group step 12-1 to county tax assessor-collectors department. The new position is necessary in order to assist with the influx of workload when the department reopens and in-person transactions. Along with new state laws, Texas Department of Motor Vehicles procedures currently being implemented regarding insurance of license plate for off-highway vehicles and golf carts, additional monitoring required to identify the in-combat fraud, waste, and abuse, and having a web dealer program in place by September 1st.
I have a question on this, Judge, if I may.
Yeah.
You know, we authorized the floater position sometime back to handle situations that are unusual, or somebody's out for a long term. I do not see this to be a long-term issue. You know, it may take six months. It may take a year. It may take three months. I don't know. But I would think that would be an ideal spot for that floater to go and to be assigned there until the tax assessor-collector, thanks for back to normal.
Yeah, and then go alongside my, Judge. I would like to know, is there any additional income from the state on some of these new requirements? Are they going to fund some of these activities?
Hi, Judge.
Yeah, Jerry?
This is Jerry. Yes.
Go ahead.
Myself and Anna are here. And there will be no, it's like unfunded mandates coming down from DMV. The, I disagree on this being a temporary position because DMV is taking combating fraud very seriously. They're adding more modules for staff employees to take. I need a staff member to follow, document, and report that to the state. Because when we do that, it opens up things that we can access in the computer. And I just feel like with the golf carts coming on board and getting license plates, that's going to cause a huge rush here. And it's always ongoing. As it is, we're having a hard time meeting the demands. Not currently, but it will be. And we've seen an increase in supplemental corrections from the appraisal district. Back in 2016, we had nine supplements to process throughout the tax year. 2017, that jumped to 23. And 2019, we had 22 supplements. And we're looking at 90 to 148 pages of refunds that have to be done because of supplemental corrections. Anna and I are the only ones qualified to do supplements, and we're going to have to bring somebody else on board on that. And there's a lot of cross-training that still needs to be done because my time is limited.
Well, you mentioned supplements. Could you kind of give me some information on these supplements? I'm not sure I understand what you're speaking about.
Supplements are corrections that we receive from the appraisal district, supplemental roles that are ongoing, like people applying for homestead exemptions, they're protesting values as they go forth. And so we get one maybe every three to four weeks.
Yes.
And it, and we get multiples at one time, and it takes us a while to process it. And before we're through processing one, the appraisal district has another one waiting for us.
Okay, so now golf carts. Could you kind of give me on this, these are state-issued license plates for golf carts?
Yes, this is brand new. They do not require registration.
Now, are we going to be getting any revenue off of issuing or handling the sale of these license plates?
There is a small fee for it. There are not a registration. There's just a license plate, kind of like to determine, maybe for law enforcement, to determine who is, owns that golf cart in case they're doing things that are not illegal, that are legal. So there is a small fee that we are collecting for them. So we do get a little bit, not a lot.
So what are you projecting?
And we are going to be, we are going to be starting where we have to do web dealer with our dealers. And these are not just our local dealers. These are dealers throughout the state can use with us. And we have not been using it, and it's going to be a full-time position with somebody working this web dealer. And it starts, and we're mandated to take effect with it August 1st. We have to do it.
Jerry, if I may, so this request is not because of COVID. This request is because of additional job items.
That is correct.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're going to get slammed when we open from customers because of COVID and not being open to the public right now. But all of that, at the end of August, that web dealer comes on board. I think the golf carts are close to being.
We're already on board with golf carts.
Golf carts. Have we got our license plates?
Mm-hmm.
So that's going to start opening up when we open back up. And so it's not all COVID-related. I think they're going to rest in right after businesses start opening. I think I heard somebody ask about the projection of the cost.
Yes.
I had worked with the auditor's office, and we looked at the numbers at the end of March. And at that time, the auditor's office projected from April 1st through December 31st, that increase for our current budget year would be $17,118. And then, looking at it as an addition to the 2021 budget, it was projected at $31,180.
Is that with all, is that with all the fringes added in?
Yes.
And is that budgeted anywhere, or does that just have to come out of the county budget?
Well, the $31,000 would be worked in, hopefully, to next year's budget. The $17,000, that's looking at things that I projected that might be left over in my budget. That's kind of been accounted for. We were hoping there might be some more, but I don't know that. So that would have to come out of surplus.
$17,000 would need to come out of surplus, $17,000?
I don't know where they would take it from, but I don't have it in my budget.
You're saying the total amount that would need to come from somewhere for this year is $17,000?
As of the end of March. Now, we're at the end of April, so it will be a little less than that.
Let me see if I got this right. Jerry, you're saying that the actual salary outlay, plus all of the fringes, healthcare and whatnot, is only going to amount to $17,118 this year?
For the rest of this year.
Yes, that's what the auditor's office projected.
And what is the, what is the rate on that particular position per hour?
$14.99, I believe. It's a group 12, step 1.
$14.99 an hour?
Per hour, yes.
So $15 an hour, and we've got eight months left on this year? And you're only coming up with?
Yes.
That doesn't even have anything in there for healthcare or anything else? I mean, I think that number's.
Want to step in?
Well, I didn't really work on it. Tana did. But my, there were some other.
Thank you, Ben.
It's on. There were some other savings in her budget that would cause it to be, not have to be the full amount. But I don't believe that includes the benefits either. There's no way. And the full $31,000 is not going to include benefits either.
Well, I don't think so either. I think that the number is really understated, probably closer, you could probably add 40% to that number.
On my spreadsheet that I'm looking at that Tana worked up, I do see approximate seven-week salary with burdens not used at $61.80, and approximate attrition and unused salary with burdens at $78.82. So I don't know if that was, and then she highlighted 17,118.
Yeah, she's taken into account, Jerry, some of the monies that she anticipates from attrition and from a underlying item that you're not using. So we haven't used the full amount. So it does, doesn't include, and it doesn't state the whole amount because there are some anticipated savings.
I'd sure like to see how this has, how this has been computed, and also these potential savings. What's to keep those numbers that are currently in our budget from going ahead and be expended on other items?
Is this something, Jerry, that we can bring back to them next meeting, and we can have that information for them, or I can get the information for you?
Uh, yeah.
I'm fine with bringing it. I didn't think about sending out Tana's spreadsheet. She did make the comment, the increase highlighted in blue will be reflected in your 2021 budget. And that amount was the $31,180. So I'll be glad to share, and we can bring it back.
Okay, why don't we table this?
I'd make a motion to table until we get more information. And actually, I think this item ought to be addressed in our budget hearings, which will be starting a little over a month from now, right, Judge?
Yeah.
You know, one other comment, Jerry. I noticed in dealing with the state that they have, they've extended the deadlines. And actually, to smooth out the workload on their folks at the state, at the state, for instance, like on the Texas Workforce Commission, they're adding an additional 15, 20 days and whatnot. On driver's license renewals, they're giving you a two-month grace period. I'm currently driving with an expired driver's license because of that.
Getting sheriff.
Yeah, come and get me. But is there anything we can do to lighten this load by working on some of the deadlines that we have?
Well, the governor has extended license plate registration. Once the disaster ends, once he proclaims that there's an end to this disaster, then there's a 60-day extension period for people to take care of getting their vehicles inspected, registered, titled, et cetera. We have seen an increase in our mail while we are here doing mail and online transactions of renewals, which I very much appreciate because that will keep, keep our line a little bit shorter from when we open.
Well, this position that we're asking for has been in the, we've been talking about it for a while now. It really doesn't really reflect anything with COVID. It is an increase of workload that we have been seeing. And even since the storm, we have not had a decrease in workload. And instead, we have been seeing a major increase to where our staff is not being able to keep up, but to keep the money coming in that we need to support this county. We really do need the extra staff member to keep this office working at a very good, high pace to keep the money coming in. I feel that we do need this. And it's like I said, it's something Jerry and I have been talking about for over a year now, that it's been needed. And we've been pushing it off. And it just happened that when we decided we wanted to ask for it, the disaster happens. So, but it's still, we still business as usual over here. So we're just trying to get things ready and ordered so we can keep going, especially when we open back up, or even for next year and the following years, to keep up with this county.
When you have.
That brings up something that I wanted to ask you, and that is, to what extent is this information that we didn't know when we approved the budget last summer? I understand, of course, the COVID impact is new, but the regulatory impact and the things that you've had in the works for a while, I mean, we already knew those when we approved the budget last year.
Well, the mandates from the state came in in September, after budgeting, that the state has now addressed that are going to affect. Some of them started January 1st, and the rest of them that the state is mandating now is starting August 1st. And that's our web dealer. Where we did not do web dealer, we have not been doing it. But it's mandated now by the state that we have to do it. And I see that's going to be an issue, even with our computers that we're going to probably have to address with the state, getting another computer just to work web dealer, to not interfere with our customers.
All of this stuff from DMV as a result of the last legislative session, that they're just coming up with ways to implement those laws?
I know in the, in the past, y'all have been very, very diligent in, you know, you've taken on more and more and more with the same number of people, and I applaud you for that. But this is not COVID-driven. This is driven by the legislature, right?
The majority of it, yes. Uh-huh. The only thing, the only thing COVID is driving is the fact that our lines will be longer at first. And they were already pretty long enough.
Yeah, they were already long.
Somebody mentioned that you've got, you've got workload data. It would be very helpful when you asked for something like this, if you would include the workload data so that we can compare it.
Okay.
All right. And motion been made to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Namos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discuss, approve, disapprove. March 2020 Treasury Report. Ms. Cartwright.
Y'all have the report. You have any questions on any of the fund numbers?
Anybody have any questions?
I just got it this morning, so I'm still looking at it here. I'm sure I can come up with some questions. I did get, I did get a. I did get a, I did get a, a copy of your, your analysis of the hot tax and also the venue tax. And you showed that the venue tax situation, and more than likely, we're going to have a little shortfall this year in terms of handling our, our debt service.
Yes, sir.
I guess I would ask the question right here, since we're, we're sitting with, uh, eight hundred and five thousand dollars in venue projects funds, it's my understanding that that's the maintenance fund?
The venue projects, yes, that's the maintenance M and O on all the projects.
Okay. And it would be possible, we have the flexibility to down, transfer some of those funds back into the collection account?
Yeah, actually, me and Jackie had discussed that because we make monthly budgeted transfers, and so I'm watching the numbers every time that I do it to make sure that the INS account has enough to make the debt service payment.
Because we haven't really seen the impact yet this year as far as, uh, the downturn on a number of things, sales taxes, and venue taxes, and hot fund taxes, and everything else. But we need to have the flexibility, and looking at a lot of these fund balances, our fund balances appear to be in pretty good shape, but we need to have that flexibility to be able to transfer funds. I know some of these are restricted funds, and it can only be used in certain ways.
And keep in mind that we do have two hundred and two-ish thousand dollars that are in the reserve for if and when we need it.
I think that that's required in the, in the bonding agreement going forward, that it has to be there until it's paid off. I would point out to you, though, that if you look at that bond indenture, that was done back in two thousand and ten, I believe, that the county, uh, will pay the, the debt service, it ended, but it's restricted to the collections, so that if, if push came to shove, which we're nowhere close to that at this point in time, the, the bondholders would have to wait to get their funds when those funds became available. Go back and check it out.
Okay. I didn't understand that part, that, that it was totally based on that.
I'd make a motion to approve the report. Motion made.
I'll second it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's First Quarter Investment Report.
Um, interest earned and accrued so far for the first quarter is a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars for the operating account. We had budgeted four hundred and five, which puts it at twenty-seven percent. As you probably well know, interest has gone to hardly anything. We still are getting one percent at our depository bank, which right now is looking really good. I talked to the bank president, they're willing to hold all of our money if they need to. The only bad part about that is we're up for a depository contract this year. So we'll see what, um, I think it's in November, so we'll see what that brings. My main goal at this point is not to lose any money. If we don't make anything, well, okay, but right now, we are, we, you know, we're at the one percent.
Like a little selling for less than what?
And the Fed's expected to go below zero this week, so I'm watching it real close.
Make a motion to approve the report.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved, disapproved distribution of a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and four dollars of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services Refuge Revenue Sharing Act, annual payment to local governments for lands under their administration. This is something we do every year.
I do have a question. It seems to me like this, uh, this amount continues to go down that they're sending to us. In two thousand and eighteen, received a total of a hundred and twenty-six thousand. This year's down to one oh nine.
Right.
And the, the letter that you've got here says that the amount of a hundred and nine is the, paid strictly from revenues generated from these lands. So, so I didn't realize that they were on a fixed program. If their revenue goes down, they pass it right on to us, right?
Right, so it's the wildlife refuge, and so I'm sure Harvey had a lot to play with that and-
Yeah, but this is, yeah, this is for year two thousand and nineteen.
Right, for their-
They're still recovering.
They were closed for almost a year, weren't they?
Are they?
And the, and the distribution I do is this, on the same basis that we had always done it. For some reason, I don't know what, the school district percentage went down a little bit from what they were last year, but I did it based on numbers that Jerry Cox gave me.
Just for the, uh, hawks on our, on our, uh, looking at impacts on budgets, we only budgeted this year thirty thousand dollars, and we're going to receive thirty thousand five hundred and thirty-six, so that's a blessing right there. I'd make a motion to approve the distribution.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved, disapproved, budget line item transferred, we know what that is.
We have none at this time.
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Account, payroll, payroll liabilities, accounts payable.
There's nothing unusual, y'all should have checked this.
Move to approve.
Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's time for any elected official, department head to make an announcement that need to bring out to us.
I have an announcement.
Just a minute. We've got a report scheduled, too.
I have a dues report for the collections, and y'all should have received your report probably Thursday. It shows that we have, compared to last year, had a decrease of ten thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents in collection. Everybody was down this time.
So Jackie, uh, for instance, on the JPs and whatnot, um, are they currently having any court, or any fee collections?
Other than what comes in in the mail and people that come in, I'm not sure that they're holding any court at all. These are February collections.
I know.
It was prior.
I know.
But currently, I, I'm not aware of anybody that-
So more than likely, this thing's going to get a lot worse as we go forward as well, along with sales taxes and hot taxes and, okay, all kinds of taxes.
All right, uh, all right, Michelle?
Yes, I just wanted to let the court know that this week, we will, my department will be undergoing the cybersecurity assessment that we signed up for last August through the Secretary of State's office. It'll be, um, happening Thursday and Friday of this week.
It's what now?
It's a cybersecurity assessment, um-
Cybersecurity, okay.
Right, they used to come in, but due to COVID, they'll be doing it virtually.
Anyone else? Being said, uh, we have nothing to go in a closed session about, so do I have a motion?
Move it.
Motion made to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you very much.